All right, we will come to order. This is the Rules and Government Relations Committee meeting of December 3rd, 2019. Do we have any minutes?
Since you're October 1st today.
Okay, I have not had a chance.
A rule resolution.
Okay, you said that to me today.
Yeah, and I only put down those opposed because I have a list and those against, but I did not write all the comments. I just wanted to say, watch the video.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's...
I just went over the counselor's comments and just added that, so.
Okay.
Do you want to approve them or do you want to wait and read them? We can do it last in the next meeting.
I mean, to be honest, I have not had a chance to review them yet, so like I haven't even opened it, so it would be sort of in bad faith, but...
Well, I sent them late, so I agree.
Okay, cool, we'll get those last time and thank you for going through that whole thing again. All right, so I'm hoping that we can address this Rule 11 business tonight. So based on what we did last, two weeks ago, I went back. I swapped, I did the sort of the though we were talking about earlier. So what we basically did is like instead of breaking ordinance out into two committees and then merging one of those with public safety, I just moved some stuff from ordinance over to public safety to really say that specifically any changes to city ordinances or traffic rules and order, anything like that, that have to do with public safety should go to public safety. So that should move a good deal of the pretty big time-consuming things that we dealt, that got central ordinance this year into public safety.
Like the rail trail and the bike.
Yeah, stuff like that.
What do you think of that? You're on ordinance side as well.
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm just trying to figure out how we would, like what would be the... Because the rail trail to me covers both. That was a public safety issue after we got into it. Going into it, it was a, should we have beer sold on a bike? But then it became, oh my God, it's too wide, it's too long, it's that and the other thing. So how would we have known? If we didn't know what we know now, how would we have assumed that would have been a public safety?
Right, so in that particular case, that might be one where maybe it gets passed off. Like maybe, like initially you go in thinking the scope is really appropriate for ordinance, which also has 10 million things on its agenda. And at some point you realize, okay, so you know, in that case, for instance, it was pretty early on, people were like, well, this publicly, you know, like the alcohol thing, that's probably not going to fly. There's not really an appetite for that. But look, there are all these other sort of public safety related things. I would say even the sort of like should, like consuming alcohol in public could potentially fall under a public safety. I mean, like if you were talking about another thing that I was saying could potentially was like the, the public consumption of cannabis.
Yeah.
That seems to be something that you could plausibly just say, okay, well, that... I mean, the, you know, that's, that's really, we can call that a public safety thing because ultimately it's something that the, the police will be enforcing.
Yeah.
I think ultimately flexibility is the key.
Yeah.
I think if the chair of the ordinance committee wants to do what is an ordinance, really wants it on his or her committee, they should have the right to say so.
Of course, I mean, we...
That's a conversation with the president prior to the assignment of something to which committee. If, if, if I'm the president and I see ordinance has a ton of stuff, I try to get some things passed off. I just think we need to maintain that flexibility and somewhere we ought to write that down. So that if there's a way, and it, it looks like what we're trying to do is relieve ordinance, the pressure on ordinance, there seems to be a lot coming into ordinance.
Well, that's part of it, yeah. I mean, no, I agree that we, that flexibility, I mean, I don't think anyone here disagrees. That flexibility is important. We don't want to be piling things on to one group when there's another group that could handle it. I do think that when people, you know, just to recap what we discussed two weeks ago, I do think that sometimes when people are requesting their committee assignments and when a president is looking at saying where do we want to put people, having some clarification about what sort of stuff is normally going here versus there is going to help people.
Well, that's what this does.
Right, yeah, and, and, right, and any of our city council rules obviously are, you know, I mean, these are largely advisory, but beyond that, like, you know, even if it was hard and fast, we can always suspend a rule if there needs to be. So, but I do, I do think that the purpose of this was really to give some clarity about what these various rules are and see if there's some opportunities to shift some, some stuff around.
Yeah.
So that we don't have some committees not meeting for months while others are.
Yeah, and I think that's, I actually think creating a little more specificity around each of the committees is good. One thing that, so as I say that, I'm going to contradict myself with my next sentence, is that I also think that a lot of the language that was clarifying language or more detailed language seems to have been taken out. And you've kind of anesthetized all of the, to down to bullets. And I think that kind of language can go back because it is the city council rules and we can be a little more descriptive in our... So I'm speaking strictly for appointments. We went from three paragraphs down to three bullets. And I think the paragraphs add context to what we're trying to do. Yes, you can just say pursuant to section 210, but if I'm new to the council, now I gotta go to 210 and read it, which totally fine. But I don't think it's wrong to have more descriptive language in here. So I personally have added some back in my version of it. Because I think that's kind of important. But I, I think I know where you were going, which was to create uniformity and how they are viewed in the, there are some that are very wordy and some that are boom, 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 boom. You were just trying to get, I think, all one right.
It's helpful for a new counselor to have what you're saying, specificity and more clarity on what that committee does. These tell you the general, in general, points of view. When I was looking at this, I wondered if this came from you because I thought you were going to be a little more kind of clarity on what the expectations are for the committee to do with appointments, reappointments, et cetera, how you were doing it and whether or not you wanted to codify that in any way.
So on that particular thing, I kind of feel like we should not necessarily be prescriptive about how you do what you need to do. So what, so the appointment subcommittee has to reject or approve all mayoral appointments. Should we tell them how they go about rejecting or... There might be a better way than what I came up with. And we need to have the flexibility for someone to be able to do that. So all I did was create more conversation with the people. I know we're kind of going a little off track, so.
That's true.
But, so I would prefer not to codify what I did, but leave it and let the next person be creative and figure out a way to get to the same place.
Okay.
I do think there's some language, though. Like I, I thought we could leave in, recommend or reject all mayoral appointments to all multi-member boards and committees, including department heads. I thought that was important to have in there and it had been moved and taken out. I also think under city council, we should add back, including city clerk, clerk of the city council, city auditor and principal assessor.
Yeah, I mean, so my thought in both of those cases in, I mean, and I have no problem bringing that stuff back in. I was just working with what I had.
Yeah.
But a lot of, what I was trying to do was leave the language so that say if there's another position that comes up, like if we, if we create a new position that is also a city, a city council president appointment, that that falls under here too.
Then we gotta update the...
That we don't have to, there's like, no, if, if the city council president appoints this person, this is the stuff we do.
I mean, we could put wording in there that says currently, these are the, you know, and any future...
Right, and any other person that may be appointed.
Appointed by the city.
Yeah, okay, I'm fine with that, yeah. I mean, I, my little thing was just to keep it, I mean, my, you might notice this from where I've made changes, my, generally my writing style is to use as, to try and be compact about things.
But the purpose of these rule descriptions is to give counselors an idea of what they're supposed to do. And I agree with PEG, a little more description on anything would help. I'm not saying add language in the ordinance or property or else that was there, that was eliminated necessarily. But I would make sure that Salem and JP and others are okay with these.
They have the opportunity to be here and voice theirs.
I know, but I'm trying to avoid a long meeting when this comes forward.
Well, I was too, that's why I invited them out here.
Nice.
Well, they came the last time.
Yeah, they did, and they had a lot of great feedback.
Well, this is the kind of feedback that PEG's giving that looks, you know, sense.
Yeah.
So to the, from the perspective of the appointments committee, adding those lines back and, you know, we'll figure out language for the, and any other role that is added to the appointment list or whatever.
Sure.
Then I'm okay with it. I really just felt strongly that we be specific about multi-member boards, committees, including department heads.
Right, yeah, I, I wrote something there and it was like, just trying to figure out because there's multi-member boards and committees and there's also department heads. And I, I wrote something and it was just awkward and I was like, no, it doesn't matter if the mayor appoints some, like, yeah, because it's anyone.
That falls into those categories.
That the charter.
If the mayor is appointing, yeah, yeah.
Is there, there's certain positions within the charter.
And pursuant to 210, we also have that in there.
Right, and that, 210 is where it says, here are the positions that need city council appointment.
So if you add one, you add it to 210 and then...
Yeah.
Yeah. So adding that back, I'm good with appointments. Then I just generically, if we could just kind of go to public safety for a second, and I don't know where Omar stands on this, but in reading through it, again, creating a little more clarity, I thought we should, where you have in the third bullet, address all other matters, I changed that to provide coordination and oversight for all other matters related to public safety. I think there's a difference between addressing and providing oversight.
I love it.
I also added back included but not limited to that paragraph that says police, fire, neighborhood park, blah, blah, blah. But I know some of that stuff, you intend to be part of property, so I left it all in there.
Oh, no, that wasn't it. It was just that when it comes to what all other matters are, most matters coming before the council related to those departments are either appointments or finance. And the way that it was written made it seem like...
Can you tell me what that was again under my rules?
Including but not limited to police, fire, neighborhood parks and public spaces, safety engineering and environmental, public works and engineering, municipal parking, public lighting and emergency services. That is currently the description of public safety.
Why do you think that's, that sounds like it should be in public safety? Or, you know, as matters that may be in public safety, if they come from the police or come from emergency services.
Well...
I think that was written, this might have been written by Dan Carey when he was chair, so I'm not, I'm not sure where you're going with, you said it was usually in another depart, other chair.
Well, the way it says, the first, the first part of that paragraph is, it says something like, all other matters related to the police, but that's not really true.
No, all other matters related, sorry.
No, it says...
Or the police and then it keeps going.
What it's, yeah, but it says what I just read, including but not limited to police, fire, neighborhood...
But what, the start of that.
The mission of East Hampton Public Safety Subcommittee is to provide in a democratic and transparent manner, coordination and oversight of all matters related to public safety which come before the council.
Right, but...
So we don't have that in here. But then later it says including but not limited to.
Yeah.
And so I guess what I'm saying is, again, to provide parameters around which a city council can look at this and go, oh, that's public safety.
Right.
And I'm just saying, I'm, if you, if some of these rightfully you believe belong to property or now to ordinance, then we can pull those out and put them over there, like public, well, I don't know.
Well, my thought was like, okay, think about it like this. If you have a matter concerning, let's just use the police because that was one of the first ones.
Yeah.
What are the matters concerning the police that come before the council? Some, they don't all go to public safety.
Well, a lot of them have to do with the purchase of a police car, yes, that's finance.
Right.
Or speeding.
But speeding...
Speeding, yes, would go to public safety.
And, and what did JP just before, the traffic issues on Florence Road.
Sure.
That's, that's a police issue.
Yeah, those would go to public safety.
Or Row Road Street by Ken and Bagel, that was a thing once.
What you're, what I think PEG is getting at, leave the flexibility in that language in there.
Okay, I thought it was...
My guide of future discussion between the president and the chair was, should you get them?
It can still be, you don't put it in public safety. I mean, you can still put it somewhere else, but again, I feel like because these are our rules, we can write them any way we want. And I like more descriptive clarity.
Okay.
I think that was Dan's intent originally too.
Yeah, I...
Trying to be concise, I understand, but...
Right, to me, I mean, I don't, I'm not deeply invested in this, but to me, it, the language itself was overly broad. Because it, it seemed to suggest that any matter, including, including matters that clearly would go to appointments or that would clearly go to finance.
I was going to say not limited, perhaps, but not limited to.
This is including but not limited to.
But it also, the, the sentence really starts, provide coordination and oversight for all other matters related to public safety, which come before the council fraction, colon, including but not limited to. So in other words, it does have to pertain to public safety. I mean, you can't just really-nilly, it, it, those two sentences work together. It can't work one without the other, in my mind. You can't just look at this included but not limited to without knowing that it's about public safety.
Right. Okay, well...
I think, I'd like to see PEG's language changes incorporated if you could. That's my opinion.
That's all right.
And then, I think that was the only thing. The other stuff I highlighted were, in my mind, what had changed. So property committee, just the acceptance of streets and whatever, that's the only thing that really has changed for property. If I'm reading this right.
And, yeah, acceptance of streets and utility poll requests.
Oh, do you have quotes, poll requests? You don't have poll requests on here. You have the acceptance of streets and roads to city.
Yes, it does, I have a right to utility poll requests and all utility matters.
Oh, right below it, duh, okay. And then I just, again, because I'm annoying, instead of any such property matters, would it be any other property matters as are referred to this committee?
Sure.
Such kind of, I don't know, I mean, it's fine. And then the other thing, the last three bullets for government relations, Rules and Government Relations, those are the changes. That's what I inferred from looking at the documents. Approve intergovernmental things, consider state licenses and consider resolutions.
Yeah, because those are things that we've done that weren't in the rules.
And that made sense to me, yeah.
What this does is gives a counselor, this is what might be sent to this committee.
A road map, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the more like, PEG is suggesting, the more specificity, the more description we can get to them.
Yeah, and there was, the state licenses and permits was originally an ordinance. This year we handled that in rules and to me...
We never got anything related to that.
Yeah, well, we only had one that came up and it was when there was the pedal bike stuff and so I said, I take it. To me, since it's government relations, if there's something where we're making some sort of request to the legislature or whatever, it should be going through
Totally agree.
This committee.
Yeah, I agree.
And so I did move that here. That's one change I made from the last time we talked.
Yep, that makes sense.
But other than that...
So the other thing I just wanted to ask, so on ordinance today, there is consideration of acceptance of mass general law and its statutes when applicable? Is that, so that's not there anymore, but what would be something that would align to that, what you're talking about?
Right, I've done that in rules too, where we are accepting a mass general law as it pertains to, or to finance, say we did 32B, that was a mass general law, accepting that.
That was my thought. I took that out of there because I thought that when there is like an MGL acceptance, it should go to the committee that it pertains to. So if there's something related to public property, it's probably going to property.
Oh, okay.
And so I, I just took that out entirely because I figured that when we go to accept MGLs, they should go to the...
Should we put that as like a, in an introductory paragraph? That all committees will...
I don't think you need to, no, because I think we can't try to think of everything we possibly could do. I mean, we have a large document here, so I think when some of that comes up...
Just send it to the committee that makes it, yeah.
Thanks for pointing that out though, because I, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. What's that?
I'm booked in.
Work with the planning board when required. I guess that's zoning, isn't it? About the same thing, is that what you're doing?
Well, I don't know, are there other cases where the...
Well, what do we do for the master plan?
Those were all zoning.
Yeah, what else did we go to zoning for? Oh, God, I can't remember.
I mean, if we did the master plan a couple of years ago, I think that was, I don't think that was an ordinance.
Accessory dwelling units is likely to come up next year.
But that's zoning.
But if there were some case where the planning board of the council needed to relate, that seems like the appropriate.
What I think we're saying is the word ordinance does not necessarily direct it specifically to the ordinance committee. If it's a public safety ordinance, it may go to public safety.
Right.
I think that's important to note. I don't know if we need to put that someplace in here, but that is, I mean, a change. We used to look at the word ordinance. Now, the only time in, over the history that I remember, we always debated it, was the pay plan ordinance as related to accepting...
And that should be finance.
Pay plan changes, that's an ordinance, but it would make sense to approve them both at the same time. And we always did that.
Right.
So I think what we're doing here is even more of that, no more, the word ordinance doesn't mean it goes to ordinance committee. It really depends on what we're talking about.
You know, public, there's an ordinance that is right now, tomorrow we're going to be discussing, that came out of public safety.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's already, that's already...
We're already doing that, but I think what you're trying to do is codify it is, is to say, I don't know if we need to write that down. Some ordinances may be sent to committees that pertain to that particular subject, such as public safety.
Oh, that's, that's a good point.
So part of...
But I'm only saying that to direct the president or direct the chair of the committee.
Community parameters and guidelines, like that introductory area could have a new...
There you go.
Line item.
Well, how about, what if, I just, where it says other than those handled by the public safety committee?
What does it have there?
So in 11G...
First of ordinance.
Yeah, first bullet. What if we swap that out to say something like, unless the ordinance would be more appropriately handled by another committee? Because, you know, like the pay plan, that's a good example. That's an ordinance that should probably go through finance.
Consider amendments to city ordinance, period, with a, maybe a parentheses, ordinances related to public safety or finance may be sent, or ordinances may not always find themselves with this committee if they're related to other subjects, such as public safety and finance. Something like that.
Right, so maybe I would say like, you know, um, yeah, cons... I don't know.
So, consider amendments to city ordinances other than those deemed more appropriate for other committees as an example of public safety and...
There you go, there you go.
...state's pay plan.
We're just, I'm rushed to get here.
We're done.
Great. We were just discussing ordinance.
Okay.
Consider amendments, what I just said, but the, the word ordinance always used to direct a, a measure to ordinance committee.
Yeah.
But not anymore. It should be something that allows for flexibility. In other words, we have a public safety ordinance or we have the pay plan, which I always...
Yeah, which finance could...
Right, so what, what did we say that we would add?
Yeah, I, I was...
Except for other...
I think the language you just suggested was really good.
Uh, other than those deemed more appropriate for other committees as an example, public safety. What are we talking about tomorrow, this public safety?
Uh, the public, they're doing the...
It's crosswalk ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, public safety, crosswalk ordinance, finance, pay plan. Just to give examples of when it would not go into ordinance doesn't mean that that's the only thing. Just things like that wouldn't go to ordinance.
Well, I mean, so...
Doesn't have to go to ordinance.
Traffic rules and orders are ordinances, but they've always gone to public safety.
No.
No?
No, sometimes it, sometimes they'll just come, traffic rules and orders, yeah, they'll come to us.
But that's an example where if you've got a lot going on, it could be sent.
Well, technically, traffic rules and orders is a separate document from the city ordinance.
It is.
But it's a law.
But it's law.
Sure, yeah, I mean, it is, I mean, it's a, right, there's, there's like really, there, there's three big...
There's zoning.
Zoning, city ordinances and traffic.
All I'm saying is if your agenda is huge, that's the kind of thing that might be sent to public safety.
Well, sure, and I'd actually put there that public safety, hey guys.
Hi. Okay, we're council meeting now.
I mean, that's basically what we do now.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, we're not going to start over, are we? Because these guys just showed up.
No, 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 no. I mean, you're out of ordinance, so...
Here, I'll give you some copies now. So, yeah, this is based on the feedback I got, this is what I, I did. Most of it is just cleaning up, just making it more consistent, the language and styling, but...
PEG wanted to be a little more specific in appointments. Some of the language I was there before, she wants to add back just to give, especially new counselors, an idea of what's going on in those committees. She asked them, she had done some language changes.
Skinning down.
Property committee, what did we add? The utility poll, the last three dots on property are new for property?
Yes.
The, the last two, three dots on government relations are new?
Yes, finance, I really didn't touch.
We're just trying to put something in an ordinance that would add that flexibility so that the word ordinance doesn't direct it, something like the ordinance all the time.
Which is, which is already there.
Right, but we want to try and make these more codified.
These words say what we already do.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, because some, some new person would ask, oh, well, it's an ordinance, why isn't it going to ordinance? Well, because we don't always have to do that, so.
I would say, like, look me at ordinance. So changes to the zoning ordinance into, I mean, into the map are basically the same thing. Because in order to change the map, you have to change the ordinance.
I didn't, they were in there as two different bullets before and I just didn't really understand.
Didn't you write that before?
I did, so...
I am, I screwed up.
Jeez. Well, if you're fine, I could, we could just consolidate that to zoning ordinance.
And then ordinance will have the smallest description of the whole thing.
They're very broad.
So it's all about bullets, is what you're saying?
Oh, I don't know. I think you said...
Was there a resolution about that?
I think under Rules and Government Relations, we should put, no resolution will be considered until all of the matters are done.
Well, that's, that's who I'm handling.
I was wondering if you were to put that in.
But if we want to codify that, we could, let's do that's a matter for another day. What's up, Bill?
Um, I just am curious what the conversations or the reasoning was on the utility polls and the acceptance of streets went from safety to property.
Yeah, so we took a good deal of stuff that ordinance, that ordinance is currently, well, there's a bunch of stuff that right now either public safety or ordinance could really consider. And the idea here was that a lot of that shut stuff, we're saying, no, public safety's going to consider that now to free ordinance up a little bit. And then...
To give property more work.
So I figured we, to make it a little bit of a...
I think Tom's idea was to balance the committee's workloads.
Yeah.
And some committees had very little because of the nature of how we were sending things to committee.
And the reality is that both street acceptance and utility poll requests have to do with public property. So to me, I mean, we, like, the property committee handles other sorts of easements, which is really what a utility poll request is, all the time. So it seemed like that was sort of the appropriate place for it to land.
Makes sense to me.
The other thing, I had said this earlier, is to, to try and make this something that makes it a little bit easier for a, a president or a new counselor who's trying to figure out where everyone sort of lands, to, to figure out what sort of skillsets and interests are a good fit for each committee. So, you know, if this other committee is handling all the rest of the easements and acceptances of things like that, maybe it makes sense for those things to head in there. And also property often doesn't have that much to do, so it doesn't really hurt to give them, give them something, especially as public safety and this would potentially be taking on a slightly larger role.
And in all of this, it still remains that as agendas get filled up, anything can go anywhere.
The charter only requires that a committee review it, doesn't matter which one.
So if we had to, we could send something somewhere else, but this provides more funneling guidance.
Is a guide.
Right, I mean, the charter even says that if necessary, we can create an ad hoc committee, so... Right, I mean, the Charter even says that if necessary, we can create an ad hoc committee, so if there was one really huge thing-
Charter, as an example.
Yeah, we can, we can always just do that, too, but, you know, just, this is just, these are just guidelines that, I think, you know, help-
I think it does, it does somewhat add balance to the committees.
Okay.
I would suggest that with Peg's changes and that one line we wanna add to ordinance, that maybe she send you her thoughts and that you could rewrite these for tomorrow. What do you think?
Um, yeah.
Well, you guys, don't you have to vote on?
Well, I, I can move that we have, that we adopt Peg's changes, I could do that, but I'm just wondering what you think timeline, do we wanna get this to the committee, to the whole council? At least a lot of councillors are here and seeing it, so it's not gonna be that.
Sure, I mean, if everyone-
We don't wanna vote on it tomorrow, we just wanna get it out there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, my idea was to send it just in case anyone, uh, has any last minute thoughts, because-
And then we can talk about it tomorrow and then vote on the last one of the year?
We wanna have this done for the new council.
Yeah.
So, the eighteenth, what, twenty?
Right, so we can introduce as long as we're gonna vote on it by the eighteenth. I'm fine, I mean, if everyone's cool with it, I'm, I think your changes are fine, I'm, I'm fine just amending it and putting it forward tomorrow, but if, it's true that-
Send you-
That there's three people that aren't in the-
I, I think we ought to allow the councillors, since we're sending it out at the last minute, not, I, I don't wanna bring it forward for a vote tomorrow. I don't feel that's fair, that everybody should be able to chance to absorb all this.
Well, I'm just gonna make a-
You think?
controversial comment, and I don't, I don't think we should vote on it tomorrow, but I also don't feel like we're being unfair. There's been a lot of notification about this stuff.
That's true.
And everybody's had an opportunity to come to these meetings, so, if we're gonna talk fair, I think Tom's been very fair about this.
That's true.
And if people are not prepared to vote when we go to City Council, not Tom's fault.
No, but I, I, yeah, I mean-
But I, but we don't need to go here tomorrow night.
I hear what you're saying, but, but if we-
Yeah.
We have an extra meeting, so if we get something that we, I can send out to Barb tonight, then-
Oh, yeah.
Um-
I was just making an editorial comment in general.
All I'm saying is we're sending a new document to the council.
I'm down with that.
And it's going on the same date as the-
I was keying off of your fair, I think it's fair. I mean, I shouldn't vote tomorrow. I mean, I think people have had an opportunity to see it.
Yeah, cool.
I would move that we accept the changes into the Rules of Committees as submitted by Tom Peet and as amended by Peg Connaught.
Is there, do you guys have any?
Can I help you?
Any last minute thoughts?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm still absorbing.
Oh, all right.
I just was curious what Peg's changes were.
You want any more?
And then Appointment Subcommittee.
No one's seconded.
Is he on the committee?
Well, I can second it, I, I just was curious, I'll second it and then-
You could open discussion to everybody, they're all councillors, it's not like we're opening it to the public.
That's true. So, we don't have much in a second, but if anyone needs to take a minute to review it before,